Okay, it's one o'clock. But we'll do nothing till we hear from Isaiah.
I am here and we're ready to go. Mayor, go ahead.
Yes. Yeah, it is a little better, I think.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Rancho Mirage City Council, Library and Observatory Board, the Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. I'd like to ask the service if she could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And will everyone please place your hand over your heart? And please begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republics where we stand. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Well, that worked pretty good.
That was different, very different.
It's difficult over Zoom, sorry.
Let's see if we can be a little smoother on roll call.
I'll try.
I know you'll.
Councilmember Kite?
Here.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Councilmember Townsend?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Here.
Mayor Hobart?
Here.
Isaiah, do you want to take over non-agenda public comments?
Certainly, Mayor. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on issues that are not on today's agenda for a maximum of three minutes. If you are participating remotely via the Zoom app, you can hit the raise hand button. If you're on the telephone, you would press star nine on your telephone to make a non-agenda public comment now. Before we go to those that are remote, is there anyone here in person that would like to make a non-agenda public comment? Okay, seeing none here in person. We do have somebody on the phone that would like to make a non-agenda public comment. Mr. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you again. My name's Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Rancho Mirage. And I just wanted to comment on a few things. First is my, well, I know around my, my home, anytime I open the door, I let my dogs in and out, I notice there's mosquitoes that come in with them, as to 80s Aegyptide-type species. And I'm really concerned because this shouldn't be taking place in this area. And if I notice this, of course, I may be a little more in tune to this. But when they get in the house and they stay in the house, that's an issue. And it can't just be my problem. It has to be probably countywide, or countywide, or at least Coachella Valley-wide. So this is an issue, and the Vector District needs to address it. If they can't do it, we have to find other alternatives. Okay? I think this is going to be a big issue. I see mosquito traps in everybody's house. That's how bad it's going to be. And that's just a public health issue. Okay? And I'm going to go off of that. And I've sent an email to the city manager. I haven't had a response concerning the last meeting of the city council where the telephone number was inaccurate or not working, and I wasn't able to participate in that meeting because of that. And you may be talking about a close session today. I don't know. Because it is a litigation factor. And because, you know, you probably could have participated in that factor in that manner anyway. And I would like it addressed if possible. If you don't want to address it, that's fine. But I would hope that you would, just for the ethical sake of it. And that all goes in with, I had co-compliance at the house the other day. I don't think the city is retaliating against me, but there's issues there, and we'll bring that up at a later date. Thank you again for letting me talk.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And yeah, I will go ahead and address your comments. So you did receive two written responses from the city in regard to your inquiry with the telephone line in our last city council meeting. We also provided you the relevant public records associated with that. And so the city clerk's response was accurate and complete, so there was no need for me to follow up with any additional information for you. So for everybody's awareness, the city pays for toll-free numbers so that the public, if they want to participate by phone instead of the Zoom link, or instead of coming here in person, because our chambers are open to the public, we pay for toll-free numbers so the public can do that. That is through Zoom. Obviously, our meetings are conducted through Zoom. And Zoom, in our last meeting, had an issue with the toll-free numbers. So staff did not become aware of it until during the council meeting, I received an email from Mr. Brad Anderson saying that he couldn't access the meeting. During the council meeting, I responded to him that we did have other remote users that were on the telephone participating. I went ahead and alerted our Director of Information Services that it was reported that the toll-free numbers were not working. He confirmed that. And Zoom had an issue with all their toll-free numbers that the city pays for. With today's agenda, the issue with the toll-free numbers was still occurring at the time that we released this agenda. So we noticed this on our agenda, provided different numbers on our agenda, and recommended on our agenda that the public participate via the Zoom link as the most secure way to participate in these meetings. So Mr. Anderson did receive a response from the city. The toll-free numbers are still down and were down as of when this agenda was released. Obviously, you can still participate by phone, but it may be subject to charges if you're calling from a landline. If you're calling from a cellphone, it's fine. So we did respond to your inquiry, Mr. Anderson, both with the records, appropriate public records, and the city clerk also provided you a response of what happened with the toll-free numbers in the last meeting. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to make a non-agenda public comment at this time? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and return this over to you, Mayor, for the council member comments.
Thank you. Before we go to the council member comments, I do want to read a letter from a member of the public who asked that this be made public. Her name is Melinda Fuzessi. And her letter was dated September 15th. And this is essentially what it says. Dear Council Members and City Staff, I am concerned, I am a concerned resident. My name is Melinda Fuzessi. I am concerned about a proposition coming out in November. That is Proposition 16. Proposition 16 permits the government to discriminate based on race or gender. This is clearly illegal, and we request our elected officials to take a position against it. Oddly, supporters of Proposition 16 state that Proposition 16 benefits people of color in education and government contracts. But where is the language in the proposition that says that? Instead, the proposition merely eliminates California constitution that says you cannot base your decisions on race or gender. That is the reason why the residents of the city are against Proposition 16. We must stand against the forms. Thank you, Melinda Fuzessi. We'll now go to council member comments. Who would like to kick it off?
I'll do that, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Richard.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope everyone was able to watch the exciting conclusion of the 2020 A&amp;A Inspiration last weekend. What a finish, I'm sure you'll all agree. And those of you who are watching on TV, did you happen to see our mayor introduce the telecast? Well, here it is again, just in case you missed it.
A dirty trick, Richard. Hello. It is our pleasure to welcome viewers from around the world to the 2020 A&amp;A Inspiration Tournament. It has been the city of Rancho Mirage's great honor to host this legendary event for 49 consecutive years at our famed Mission Hills Country Club. As mayor, I for one will miss being on site cheering on the world's best female golfers and seeing the winner leap into Poppy's pond. However, we are so grateful to our friends at A&amp;A, ALPGA, and IMG for bringing this historic event into our homes under difficult circumstances. On behalf of our city council and the flexible residents of Rancho Mirage, we are confident that you will enjoy this year's exciting contest. We look forward to hosting you in our scenic city again soon.
Has this advertised?
Well done, Mayor.
Richard, excuse me, there's an agent. He says he's a TV and radio and movie agent. He just wants me to have a brief conversation, then we'll get back to the meeting. Well, never mind. I'll have them. Go ahead.
Well, you did a great job. It was well done. You know, each year, this event delivers excitement. And here is the highlight video of this year's tournament.
Sunday in sunny California delivered drama. Final round of the A&amp;A Inspiration. Nellie Corder and Brooke Henderson tied, headed into the final round of the year's second major. Miriam Lee, two strokes back heading into the day, but staying with the leaders thanks to some incredible touch from off the green. This birdie, a sign of what was to come. To nine now. Corder and Henderson tied at 14-under. Here's Nellie's effort from 86 yards out. She will like this result. She would make birdie to assume that lead at 15-under. On 11 now, Brooke with a long look at birdie, and trailing Corder by a stroke, but she makes good on that to force another tie at the top. And while this was all going on, there was some incredible shot-making happening by some amateurs. First, Gabby Rupples with a birdie on 12. She tied the all-time scoring record for an amateur at seven-under. Rose Zhang, the young American and former winner of the Junior A&amp;A Inspiration. Yeah, nothing to it. Here on 13, she would break that record and finish at eight-under. She would break that record and finish at eight-under. What a week for them. Now Henderson only had one bogey in the card today, and it came here on unlucky number 13, a double bogey. That, as she tumbles one stroke back of Corder. Make it two here on 14, when Nellie cards her sixth birdie of the afternoon. She's in control at 15-under par. Meanwhile, more putter neglect from Miriam Lee, this time on 16, hoping for the best with this chip from off the green and getting the best. The birdie moves her one stroke back of Corder for the lead. She would bogey 17, though, so she would need a miracle, trailing by two shots. Henderson on 16. Birdie to move to one back, and we were in for a finish, just not the finish anyone expected. Miriam Lee's third shot on the par 5 18. Two off the lead, remember? She did it again! The eagle from off the green sends her to the clubhouse with a share of the lead. Incredible stuff from Miriam Lee. Now Corder would settle for par on 18. Henderson was saved by the backstop on her approach, and needs to get herself in position for birdie, and she will do that. She makes the birdie putt. So we would require a three-way playoff to decide a champion in the year's second major. Now to 18 again. This is Corder's third shot, and she does not get the favorable bounce on the green. She would settle again for par. Henderson and Lee were within birdie range. Up first is Brooke, and that will not fall. Par for Henderson as well. So Miriam Lee, who hasn't won in three years, steps up. That is one incredible win! And she delivers in dramatic, unlikely fashion to capture the year's second major championship. And to the winner goes the leap into Poppy's pond. I don't know if that's a leap, but it is a win, a huge win. Corder and Henderson tied for second. It was a wild week at the A&amp;A Inspiration.
What a tournament, I think you'll all agree. And a big thank you to IMG, the LPGA, A&amp;A, and all the staff and volunteers that made this event happen. We'll look forward to next year even bigger and better. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Would anyone else like to come?
Okay, Richard, Richard, I'll go next.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much.
Okay, Richard gave, Richard gave permission to.
Well, I wanted to thank Richard for making that presentation. That was just wonderful. And for all those who missed it on TV, it was a real treat. So thank you. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to make, actually, I've got two comments. So I wanted to make this kind of a public service announcement for all those interested in the Salton Sea. Needless to say, there has been a great deal of attention paid to the Salton Sea over the last many years, but even more now during this last year due to state funding. But for all those who might be unaware, the Salton Sea is California's largest lake and is now roughly twice as salty as the ocean. And when I started serving on the council over nine years ago, I was informed that 23 studies had already been conducted regarding problems and solutions related to the lake and its surroundings. So I would just like to give you some information listed in an article in the Desert Sun on Monday, September 14th, titled "Agency Seeks Input on the Salton Sea 10-Year Plan." That article stated that the California Natural Resources Agency announced it will be hosting a new round of public engagement sessions in September to get input to assist in the development of wildlife habitat restoration and dust suppression projects for the Salton Sea Management Program's 10-year plan. It also states that if you have any ideas on how to address the public health and environmental crisis around the Salton Sea, or if you are concerned that the state is far behind in implementing solutions, you can let them know this month. The goal of the management plan is to complete almost 30,000 acres of projects around the Salton Sea's increasingly exposed lake bed known as the Playa. At least half of that acreage needs to go towards the creation of new habitat such as wetlands, while the remainder will be projects to tamp down the wind-blown dust. The state has only completed one site covering 112 acres since the lake began shrinking more than 15 years ago. Also, according to the experts, the lake level has dropped nine and a half feet since 2003, and staff predicts that there could be nearly 67,000 acres of exposed lake bed by 2028. That would be more than a quarter of the lake's surface area. So if you are interested in giving your input, you can do so by tuning in to the two-hour virtual public meetings, which will be held in both English and Spanish on the following days and times: September 22nd at 1:00 p.m., September 23rd at 6:00 p.m., and September 24th, also at 6:00 p.m. These meetings will be accessible by phone or Zoom. More information and call-in details will be posted to their website, which is saltonsea.ca.gov. Prior to the meeting, the agency will also be accepting written comments, but the written comments must be sent in by September 30th and can be emailed to cnra-saltonsea@resources.ca.gov. So if you have an opinion or some suggestions, this would be a good time to provide them. And you can provide all your input to the agency, and this is the appropriate one. So please don't hesitate to look into the public participation. They are hoping for it, and that's what it is for me, Mayor, regarding this issue. But I also have to address something that, and say a few words, actually, about a speaker who has spoken twice at our Rancho Mirage Writers Festival and can be seen on our Rancho Mirage television, as well as our library website, which is YouTube. His name is Dennis Prager, and he is one of America's most respected talk show hosts and scholars. He is fiercely independent in his opinions, his intellect, his integrity, and has influenced millions of lives through his books, his lectures, and his broadcasts. My husband and I have seen him speak numerous times through the years and have always been inspired by his words of wisdom and his ability to provide to the audience a new uplifting attitude. I mention this because today I talked to Aaron Espinoza in regard to when these programs would be on RMTV. We saw him last night. Dennis was speaking at the Writers Festival, and it was telecast on RMTV, Channel 17. And we're once again very inspired. This time, he talked about happiness and how to easily achieve it. I thought his thoughts and his words were especially poignant during this very difficult and trying time for all of us. And his subject matter was "Happiness is a Serious Problem", and that is the title of one of his best books. So if you're interested in seeing him, he's going to be telecast every night at 8:00. If you wish, you can always inform your family and friends to look on YouTube, and they can see his speech on that channel. On a personal note, you know, we're all going through these very unique, difficult times. And my heart goes out, as well as everyone else's, to the people who are having difficult times, and especially those living by themselves. So just as a word of request, if you haven't kept in touch with people, please make an effort to do so. It's so important. Even if you send them a corny joke or a little bit of something on the, on your email, or if you can pick up a telephone and talk to a few people that you haven't spoken with, and just let them know that you care about them, and you're making the effort to reach out to them. I know they'll be appreciative. It's, this is, this is something that we've, none of us, to my knowledge, have ever dealt with. And it's remarkable that we're getting through it as well as most of us are. And we seem to think that if we can get through this, we can get through almost anything. But we all need to be helpful to those around us and reach out to them just to let them know, you know, they're in our hearts and they're in our minds. So if you're interested and you liked Dennis Prager's speech, pass it on to your friends and your relatives, and let them enjoy it too. And maybe they'll gain a new ability for some real good happiness in their day. Thank you. That's all for me, Mr. Mayor.
Ted or Charlie, or, yeah, Ted or Charlie?
Well, let me see. Dana, I will go. Thank you. This week, at SEVAG Homeless Committee meeting, voted not to renew the Path of Life contract coming up at the end of December. Excuse me. However, replacing it with a new SEVAG in-house staff of eight new hires to handle the duties of Path of Life program. The new direction for this change was to have a better handle on the daily operations for the homeless program in the valley. The new program will be presented to the Executive Board of SEVAG next week for final approval. Thank you.
Ted, you have something to say?
There we go. Yes, let me, let me make a couple of very brief comments. First of all, Charlie mentioned the homelessness meeting. He did an excellent job presenting Rancho Mirage's concerns, laid out our position, and I thought it was well thought out, very definitive. And I look forward to an in-depth conversation about it with the other members of the executive committee comes Monday evening. It should be a very stimulating night, but Charlie did an excellent job. Well done, Charlie. The other, oh, you're more than welcome. The other aspect is I'll tag on to what Richard had to say. I'm the only member of the council that lives actually in Rancho Mirage. And I too want to compliment the management of the country club and all of the participants during the A&amp;A. I know that being, living there and being around the facility, they did an incredible job sheltering the players, providing services for the members and residents. Nothing was frankly overlooked. We still had access to the restaurant. We had access to everything that normally we would have, again, with the proper protocols as far as safety was concerned. It was just done in, in a first-class, ultimate way. So I want to, again, compliment all of the participants in the A&amp;A. And as Richard said, we look forward. I mean, the fact is that we're only dealing with a very short period of time. The A&amp;A, if all goes according to schedule, will be back again in six and a half months. So we hope that it goes as well as it did before. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ted. We'll now move to city manager comments. Isaiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to take a brief moment to thank our fire department and our sheriff's department for their fast response to the fire that took place at Parkview Villas, which is one of the housing authorities' affordable housing properties. A unit caught fire. The fire department and sheriff's department were on scene very quickly, and they were able to contain the fire to one unit because of their fast action. So I definitely want to thank you guys, our public safety personnel, for their quick response. From the resident's standpoint, we did have to relocate six units. Even though only one unit had fire damage, there was quite a bit of smoke damage to the adjacent units. So we did have six units get relocated to a hotel property within Rancho Mirage. As other units become available in other affordable housing properties, those tenants will be relocated from the hotel into other temporary units. Staff is estimating that the rehab work here is probably about three months worth of work. So the hotel is a temporary solution while we find more spacious accommodations for them. As you can see, this unit is totally destroyed. And so about three months' worth of work. I also would like to thank our building official and our housing manager, Marcus Alamon, who both responded on scene and were there as well to assist with the relocation efforts of those residents. And that's all I have for today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to the minutes. Can we have a motion respecting the minutes, please?
Make a motion to move.
A second. Motion to move.
How you like that?
Well, it's ambiguous. I'll say that.
All right. To accept. I can continue.
To approve.
And approve.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
And a second.
Kristi, would you take the vote?
Certainly. Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich? You're on, you're muted.
Yes.
There you go. Councilmember There you go. Councilmember Townsend?
Well, I don't know if I should say yes or no, but I'll think about it. But okay, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
It only took Charlie 12 words to get to, not bad, Charlie, improving. I vote yes.
And motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. Isaiah, would you take over?
Got an easy job today. We have two items for your consideration. Item number one, our contracts, and item number two, our demands. And staff is here to answer any questions before we go to the council. If any member of the public would like to speak on one of these items, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom. If you're on the telephone, you would hit star nine on your telephone. Before we go to those that are remote, anyone here in person that would like to speak on any of the consent calendar items? Okay, seeing no one here in person. Anybody that on remote? Not seen anyone yet. So star nine on your telephone or raise hand button. Okay, Mayor, I'll return it to the council.
Thank you very much. Can we have a motion with respect to approving or not approving? Consent calendar?
I'll second that. There's a motion in a second.
So we have a motion in a second. Kristi, will you please do the roll call?
Chris, please?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zeros.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next subject, which is reports and informational items. Bill Reason, or you, is Bill there?
Yeah, Bill. Bill Reason is the city's representative. Come on up, Bill, to the podium. He's our representative on the Palm Springs Airport Commission. So, Bill, thanks for being here today.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council members, staff, and residents of Rancho Mirage. Again, I want to thank you for allowing me to represent you and the city of Rancho Mirage on the Palm Springs International Airport Commission. It's been an honor the last few years to, to represent you. It's been several months since I've been able to, to give you an update because of all the things that have been going on the last several months. But today, I have some exciting news to tell you and some not-so-exciting news to, to tell you today. First of all, not too exciting, but not tragic, is Tom Nolan, the executive director of the Palm Springs International Airport. Some of you may know him. He has resigned and took a position with the Orlando, Florida airport as their director. So we, Tom has been with, with the airport as director for 13 years now. And he has done a fabulous job of promoting the airport, growing it, improving everything, and we will miss him quite a bit. In the, in the meantime, the assistant director, Isaiah, what's his name, McGary, is, has been, has been named, has been appointed as the interim director. And according to David Reddy, the Palm Springs city manager, he's not going to immediately reach out and find a replacement because of what's going on, everything. So at this time, Ulysses will be our interim director, and he has a lot of experience. He's been around a long time in airport management. So we're looking forward to working with him. Next is passenger traffic, airline passenger traffic. Because of the virus situation the last several months, as you're quite aware, the number of people coming to the valley has decreased significantly. As an example, last April, when things started going wrong, well, in April 2019, a year ago, we had over 300,000 passengers come through the airport. This past April 2020, we had less than 20,000. And that's a 97% decrease in the number of passengers coming through the airport. Even the next month in May was still down 90%. But it's starting to, it's starting to come back. Last month in August, we were only down about 60%. So that's not good, but it's an improvement of what it was six months ago. The budget for the airport is in good shape, considering the decrease in revenues that, that they've had. Part of that is because the federal government, under the, it's called Carers Act, you're probably familiar with that, the airport received $11 million. So that helped a lot with the decrease in revenue. When I'm, revenue, car rental, that's a major portion. The airline landing fees, the, everything related to people coming to here went down. But that, so that $11 million helped quite a bit. As of the end of the fiscal year, just last month, or two months ago, about a couple of million dollars had been spent to help balance that budget. The other $8 million is being carried forward to the next budget year. Let's see here. Okay, let's go to some good news. Airline, you've probably read in the paper and heard it on the news that Southwest Airlines is coming to Palm Springs. We've been, everybody has been wanting that for years and years. And one of the reasons that this is happening, or is happening, is in negotiations with Southwest Airlines. And you're all familiar with Scott White, the CEO of the Greater Palm Springs Convention in Viddisborough. He's been negotiating with Southwest for the last few years, along with Tom Nolan, our airport director. And it's taken a few years, and finally, Southwest has decided that maybe Palm Springs might be a good, a good market for them. So they have not yet announced what routes they'll be taking, so we don't know yet. But they said by the end, by the end of this year, within the next few months, they'll be, they'll be here and serving us. And we don't know where or how often. The other thing is, let's see, oh, JetBlue, which now services New York, has added Fort Lauderdale as their destination from Palm Springs. So that's good news. And American Airlines has announced a new destination, Philadelphia. So things are looking up with the airlines. Another airline, Allegiant Airline, which now serves, I think it's Bellingham, Washington, is now going to serve Eugene, Oregon, and Boise, Ohio, out of, out of Palm Springs. So those are the major airlines that are doing it. One small airline called Boutique Air is going to start service. And they are a small airline. They, they operate small general aviation-type turboprop, eight-passenger airplanes. And they're going to start daily service between Los Angeles International and Phoenix, starting in the next month or so. So that's some good news about the airline service expanding here at, in our valley. As far as the projects going on at the airport over the last few years, the ticketing wing and the expansion of the baggage handling remodeling is on schedule. It's been going on for a little over a year. It's a major, major project. And it should be completed probably early next year. The new baggage handling is up top quality, right up to the latest standards in handling baggage behind the scenes. The, the other project that's been pending is the car rental space expansion. Because of what's been going on the last several months, the car rental companies have decided to put that on hold and, and wait and see what the demand's going to be in the next few months. So that'll, that's on hold. The, another one is the replacement of the two fire rescue trucks. Those are those big trucks for the, very expensive. The contract has been awarded, and we're waiting for delivery of those new huge fire rescue trucks. Another, another project that's on the, on the books is the, the boarding bridges that, that you walk out on to the airplane. There was a lot of discussion about whether to refurbish the existing boarding bridges or to replace them, and the decision was made to go ahead and replace them with new ones instead of trying to fix up the, the old ones. So the, that's pending. And the RFPs, the request for, for, they've been sent out, and we're waiting for bidders to come in and, and see what happens with that one. Other than that, that's about the only news, good and bad, I have for you today. Any, any questions from anybody?
Not from me.
Thanks very much, Bill, for a very great report.
Thank you, Bill. We appreciate the report and the optimism. Bill, you do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reason.
Aaron Espinoza is coming up to bat with a report on the Library and Observatory. I think.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, city council, city manager, and city staff. The Rancho Mirage Rider, or, excuse me, the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory opened up in a library-to-go model on June 9th. We're very excited about the opportunity to be the only library open for browsing for our patrons. And our focus has been on our safety for our staff and patrons as well. Since the opening, we have had over 10,000 patrons come through our facility. That's equal to about 3,600 patrons per month, which, we're averaging about 132 patrons per day, which is really good in regards to the flow. It allows everybody to be socially distanced, keep safety in regards, and allow our staff to really service our residents. In that time, we've also had just under 60,000 circulations, with that being just about 20, or 20,000 circulations per month. So our numbers are continuing to be great in regards to servicing our public for their library needs. We're currently doing an Annenberg room improvement, which is adding a versatile wall that will be, allow us some flexibility to include more programming in our Annenberg room throughout the year. I want to thank our Public Works team, who has been great to work with. And during these, the normal operations, you'll see on the screen that we will have a sliding glass wall. But the normal operations will actually have these open. So on a normal basis, they will not be enclosed, so the patrons will not see much of a difference. When we do have our special events, we will be able to close these walls in order to accommodate those needs. Staying in true fashion with the library, we have two current exhibits. On August 21st, the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory installed a new pop-up exhibit from the National Archives named Rightfully Hers, commemorating the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment. Rightfully Hers contains simple messages exploring the history of the ratification of the 19th Amendment, the women's voting rights before and after the 19th, before and after the 19th, and its impact today. In addition to that exhibit, on April 24th, marked the 30th anniversary of the launch of the Hubble telescope. The Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory was one of the selected groups of institutions across the US chosen to display a large banner of new, a new image as part of its celebration for this monumental anniversary. Unfortunately, we were not able to do our program as intended. But this new Hubble image reveals how a young and massive energetic stars sculpt and illuminate their birthplace with powerful winds and searing violent radiation. The image is nicknamed Cosmic Reef because it resembles the undersea world. The large red nebula, NGC 2014, and its smaller blue neighbor, NGC 2020, are part of the vast star-forming region in the large Magellanic Cloud, a satellite galaxy of the Milky Way, loaded, located 163,000 miles away. These two exhibits are now on display just inside the entry doors. Some of the new offerings that we have at the Rancho Mirage Library include several of our databases. And on the list here, we have 12 different databases that we do offer. I am going to highlight a few of these. Brain HQ. Brain HQ is software helped to develop to tune up your brain. It offers many different games, Sudoku, crossword puzzles. There's many dexterity games that you would be able to do with them. And it offers a wide range of opportunities. It also keeps track to see if you are doing well in regards to that. So if you're sitting at home and want something to stimulate your mind, Brain HQ is free of charge, just as all of these other databases are. And it's an opportunity to just kind of engage on something different other than maybe the television. Consumer Reports, we have brought the Consumer Reports to the digital world. We used to have it in-house as just a magazine. And with this COVID, we have got a number of requests to have Consumer Reports, and we listen to our patrons, and we now have it online, free of charge. And those issues go back to, all the way to 2004. One of the more exciting databases that we've just unveiled on September 1st is Brainfuse and Help Now. Help Now offers live tutoring available to all students regardless of their grade. It offers the opportunity to have a live tutor. If you have a question in regards to English, math, science, or any of your other school topics, these tutors will be able to help you. And for parents, if you're worried about getting, or giving them the answers to your students, that's not the case. What they're going to do is actually teach your child how to get through and critically think and help them engage into the problem. They're not just going to be there to give answers. We also help with writing labs. If you're coming up with test preps, they help with that. And there's many other learning resources. The live tutoring is available from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And we have already seen a great increase in the use of this particular software. Two more that aren't on the screen, and that is only because we just got notification that we'll be able to move forward with them, is also through Brainfuse, is a software called Job Now. It provides live, interactive, online help combined with online resources to guide It provides live, interactive, online help combined with online resources to guide residents in the necessary tasks of getting jobs. The last database that we have that we're about to offer is now Vet Now, which was carefully developed with veterans and their families in mind. Vet Now will help them navigate the VA and the benefits, transition to civilian employment, and brush on, brush up on any academic skills they may need. We're very excited about all the online opportunities that we are able to offer. These are all free of charge with your library card, and you can get a online digital library card from your home, online, on our website at www.ranchamiragelibrary.org. One of the things that the Ranch Mirage Library is quite known for is our programming. And in the new age of COVID, we're taking all of our programming virtual. I'll start with our observatory. We are offering now five particular new programs. Sun at the Moon, which used to be done live in person, is now on the virtual world. We have our stargazing primer, which covers what is up in the sky during the approximate one-month period of the Coachella Valley, and includes any big space news, mean virtual stand-in or, and in-person stargazing events. Systems Are Ago, a more passive program, which highlights the outputs previously featured on the daily tours, including time-lapse footage from the solar telescope, the All Sky Camera, and the weather station data plots. Background music with minimal narration for relaxing and pleasing viewing experience. We've also had two special live shows, The Transit of Mercury and the SpaceX Mission Preview and ISS Flyover. We were happy to unveil this morning a new opportunity, which is called Distancing with the Stars. It uses space simulation software to visit various places in the universe. It's more visually driven and stand-in for the in-person lecture. In today's e-blast, we were focusing on Saturn. And as of just a few moments ago, we had over 150 views on that particular program already. So although we're not able to do in-person programming, we have a chart here that shows how many shows we've done and total views. I do have a slight update in regards to these. The number of shows has stayed the same, but our views are now over 10,000. And you can watch these views either via e-blast or on our Ranch Mirage Library YouTube page. So not only are we getting a few hundred, or we're not getting the few hundred people in the facility, but we've been able, over the last few months, to service 10,000 people and their astronomy needs. Staying in line with our programming, just wanted to give everybody a quick update as to some of the virtual programs we're about to offer. We are going to be offering a virtual book club, which will be on a second Friday of each month. We're going to take the opportunity to do a one-book, one-community. What is that? We are going to have a subcommittee made up of community members that select books of their choice. After that, it will go to a vote from the public. And starting in November, oh, I'm sorry, in November, we will start reading the book, and in most likely late February, early March, we will have a community book club. In addition to the community book club and a lot of good discussion, we intend to have each of the authors come and speak about their books as well. This will be done in a virtual world. We're very excited to bring back historian Dr. Bill Gunalunas, and on October 6th through 8th, he will be talking about the importance and history of the Electoral College. For those of you that are familiar with Dr. Gunalunas, we usually pack our house for three consecutive days for his lectures, so we're looking forward to having him in the virtual aspects. He will also be coming back in January to speak about the First Ladies. We're going to be offering some music programming, so we have one with Peter Sprague and Romero Lumbano, Lumbombo, in Open Studio, and they have a program called Live from the Living Room Concert. We're looking forward to having these amazing jazz guitarists on our screens. Classical pianist Lenora Raphael has agreed to come back, and we will be doing a virtual event with dates to be determined. And this year, we're also bringing back the Steinway Society and their award winners. We are looking at an opportunity to host this event at the Ranch Mirage Amphitheater, with more details to come. For more information on our programming and all the opportunities that we have at the Ranch Mirage Library and Observatory, you can go to our Ranch Mirage website, library website, and you can also sign up for our e-blast. The City of Ranch Mirage Cultural Commission has a proud tradition of providing high-quality cultural programs. New this year is a program that we've created called Curiosity Trap. It is a show about fascinating subjects, people, and institutions that spark a special interest in our audience. We explore things our viewers and listeners have always been curious about by going deep with experts and icons that represent our collective cultures in connection with diverse community. In no time at all, our audience finds themselves happily trapped in a world of discovery and insight available nowhere else. This will be a monthly podcast and in addition to a video podcast, or videocast, and we are very excited that our first subject will be Bill Marx. We also have commitments from Dr. Carla Hayden, Librarian of Congress, Mark Pine, Deputy Director of Griffith Observatory, our very own Jamie Kabler, founder of the Ranch Mirage Riders Festival, and Sean C. Spencer, who speaks about the Tuskegee Airmen. We're very much looking forward to this opportunity. In addition to Curiosity Trap, we will be bringing back the Ranch Mirage Artist Studio Tour in a virtual world. We are going to, I was going to say bring back, but we didn't have the opportunity, but a program called Queens of the Coachella Valley, the History and Culture of Drag, and wrap up our season with the history of Ranch Mirage, bringing together many people that have helped build this city to what it is today. Our children's room. We have many different projects going on right now. The first one that is currently happening as we speak is Inspire Imagination. This gives children the opportunity to write a short story with, with three to four characters, and these, and the stories will be turned into real-life acting with four improv actors from Desert Theatricals. We already have a great response, and all, the deadline for our submittals is October 2nd, so please get your stories in, and you can find more information on our website. Throughout this pandemic, we've had to look at different ways to do things. We have now been offering a Storytime via our Facebook page, our YouTube, twice a week. We are also in the midst of getting ready to send an e-blast out, that we will be offering two distinct book groups, ages seven to nine and 10 to 12. We look forward to having great conversations with these children. Starting in October, we're bringing back our Family Nights in a virtual capacity. We're very pleased to have our first one be the Fire Safety with the Ranch Mirage Fire Department. We had the opportunity to film our firemen in their own homes, the fire department. They gave us their own tour, and we look forward to showing you all the amazing things that they are able to do. We'll have a virtual costume contest for Halloween, a Family Pyjama Night, a Holiday Light Scavenger Hunt, and then coming in January, a Starry Night Family Night, where they will be able to build their own telescopes. We have just concluded our 25th reading, or, Summer Reading Club. We would like to thank Brian and Patricia A. Herman for their generous contributions to support this endeavor. We had a very successful year. As you can see on the screen, our staff had to take on new challenges. Not one of our staff had any experience in front of the screen doing arts and crafts. They did an amazing job. They had fun with it, and we have had such a great response that we may continue it in the near future. Each of these programs, we would give the children a packet for the week, and throughout the week, we would offer video tutorials on how to do those. It kept our staff engaged, it kept the children engaged, and it really allowed them to have a great time. And last but not least, the Ranch Mirage Riders Festival. We unfortunately had to make the decision to reschedule the 2021 Riders Festival, and we are rescheduling it for one full year to the January 2022. But although we are rescheduling the festival, the festival has taken the opportunity to provide many different programming opportunities. On October 22nd, we will be hosting Susan Eisenhower and H.W. Brands when they are in conversation, talking about Susan's book, How I Cled: The Principles Behind Eisenhower's Biggest Decisions. New this year, the Ranch Mirage Riders Festival was pleased to partner with the USC Doran-Ziss Center for Political Future. We are offering many different programs over the next few months, so please go to our website at www.rmridersfest.org for more information, and we look forward to serving the public at the Ranch Mirage Library and Observatory. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Aaron.
We'll move now to the action calendar. Isaiah?
Excuse me, can I just say something, Dana? Thank you. You know, people call and say, or when I meet people, and they say, what a shame it is to think that that beautiful library and observatory are just sitting there empty and nothing is going on. To hear this, and thank you for him to come and tell the story of what these amazing people are doing at that observatory and that library, it, I, I'm lost for words, other than it's outstanding. Congratulations. I know the, what you're doing now is double-double work to put on these fabulous programs in both of these identities as the observatory and the library. Congratulations. Aaron, thank you for coming and sharing this with us. Thank you, Mayor.
Well said, Charlie. Anybody else have any comments before we move on to the action calendar?
Mayor, I just wanted to take a second to thank Aaron and the staff over at the library. This is just a fraction of what they do on a daily basis, and when we made the decision to open the doors again to the public in early June, you know, the staff really just jumped on with the mission of getting back to serving the public. And that's what I kept on hearing from the staff, is that they were eager to open the doors, albeit it is in a limited fashion, and I think quickly what we realized was the need in our community for people to have a place to go stimulate their minds and be able to check out the material from the library. So Aaron, thank you to you and your staff for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll do the action calendar. Isaiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is item number five. This is a resolution approving an application for funding from the Community Development Block Grant Program, and Marcus Alamon, our Housing Manager, will do the presentation. Marcus?
Good afternoon, Mayor Hobart, City Council, and City Staff. In response to COVID-19, approximately $18.7 million in federal funding has been made available to the Community Development Block Grant Program authorized by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security, or CARES Act. This new funding will be allocated to eligible jurisdictions to perform activities related to COVID-19 response and relief. Staff recommends that the city apply for the maximum amount of funding allocation, being $144,323, to help offset the city's share of costs associated with the Great Plates Delivered Program. In order to apply for this grant funding, the city is required to include a resolution authorizing the application and receipt of the grant funds. Upon adoption of the attached resolution, staff will finalize the grant application and submit for state review. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. Before we go to the council, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment period for this item. If you'd like to speak on the item, now is the time to do so. If you're on Zoom, you would hit the raise hand button. If you're on the telephone, you'd hit star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in person that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one here in person, we will go back to our remote users. Okay, I'll turn this back over to you, Mayor, as no one has indicated that they'd like to speak on this item.
Does anybody on the council have a comment to make about it, or is anybody ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2020, next in order for an application for funding and the execution of a grant agreement, and any amendments thereto from the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program.
Hold on, hold on a second. Is anybody else having trouble hearing?
Yes.
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 Getting echo and feedback.
Jason, Isaiah, can, Jason, or somebody, look at whatever the problem is. What is being said by the speaker is jumbled, and you cannot make sense of it.
About this, is that any clearer from this point?
No, we're having feedback.
Just, just one moment. So let me go talk to Jason, just pause on the motion.
Yeah, even Dana, when you're speaking, there's feedback, too.
Was there?
Mayor Protem Wile.
Yeah.
Your microphone is probably too close to your laptop or the speakers, so your micro, or your microphone is picking up what you're saying through your speakers, which is creating the echo. So try moving your microphone back and see if that helps.
I just did that. Is that any clearer?
Yes. So that fixed the problem. If the council could unmute themselves, you can go ahead and continue with your motion.
All right, let's see if that's any clearer. The motion is that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2020, next in order, approving an application for funding and the execution of a grant agreement and any amendments thereto from the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program, Coronavirus Response Round One, CDBG, CD1, NOFA, dated June 5, 2020.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kristi, will you please do the roll call vote?
Certainly.
Before you do that, Mayor Hobart and Councilman Kite, we still show you guys as muted. If you could please unmute yourselves. We got you, Richard. Mayor Hobart, you will need to unmute yourself. Go ahead and start with the vote, Kristi, and the mayor will be last.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Jason, can you please call the mayor? Jason, can you please call the mayor?
Isaiah?
Yes.
How do we go from a muted position to non-muted when nobody is touching the equipment?
In order to figure out who the feedback was coming from, we had to mute you guys.
I see.
And so when, when Jason mutes you, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Okay, didn't realize that took place.
Jason has provided the solution to that issue. Yes, go ahead, Isaiah.
Okay, so Kristi, I think Mayor Hobart was last, so I think you just need to say yes or no on the item. The motion was to approve.
Mayor Hobart?
I second it. Second.
No, we, we've already done that. There's been a motion in a second. The other four council members have voted, so Mayor, it's your turn to vote.
I go, Mayor votes yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, we will now move on to item number six on our agenda. This is amendment number five to our MOU between the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, CVAG, and the member jurisdictions for our regional street sweeping program. And this presentation will be handled by Calver Pachol, our Senior Manager of Facilities and Streets. Calver, go ahead.
Thank you, Isaiah. Mayor and City Council, since the 1990s, Coachella Valley Association of Governments, CVAG, membered cities in Riverside County have contributed funding for original, regional street sweeping program to reduce PM10 air pollution in Coachella Valley. In 2016, the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU between CVAG and its members for AB2766 funding was extended through June 30 of 2020. On June 8, 2020, the CVAG Executive Committee authorized a Fifth Amendment to the AB2766 MOU that would extend the term through June 30, 2024, four years. The Executive Committee approved to maintain CVAG's AB2766 formula at 75% to provide sustainable funding of the regional PM10 street sweeping program. This Amendment Five to the AB2766 MOU needs to be approved and signed by all participating jurisdictions. Staff is recommending approving Amendment Five to AB2766 MOU between CVAG and the city to maintain contributions from the city and the county at 75% to provide sustainable funding of the regional PM10 street sweeping program through June 30, 2024, and authorize the city manager to execute Amendment Five to AB2766 MOU. The city does not need to perform a budget adjustment. The approved city budget include a 75% allocation to CVAG for a street sweeping program consistent with the previous year. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Calver. Let's go ahead and open up the public comment on this item. If you'd like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. You would press the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in person that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one here in person, let's go back to our remote users. Again, raise hand and star nine on your telephone. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone that wishes to speak on this item, so Mayor, I will return this to you and the council.
Thank you very much. Can we have a motion?
I will make a motion that the city council, A, approve Amendment Five to AB2766 Memorandum.
Yeah.
Hold on a second, Charlie. Both of you were speaking at the beginning, and I think that, I think you had something further to say, Iris did.
I just, I had two questions. Number one, I wanted to ask Calver of, he knows how often our streets are being swept, in particular, the intersection at Dyna Shore and Bob Hope, where there is a lot of blow sand that's on the streets?
All streets are swept by weekly. They are rotating schedules, but every two weeks, every street in the city that we maintain, it's, it's swept.
Okay, so it's, okay. And so the corner of Dyna Shore and Bob Hope doesn't have any extra attention paid to it unless there's a need for it? Or how does that work?
That is correct. Our streets departments, they have sections that they review weekly, and if more detail is needed, we will do that in-house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else that anybody wishes to say before we go back with Charlie? Okay, Charlie, go ahead and start that motion over again if you would please.
Thank you, Dana. I'll make a motion that the city council, A, approve Amendments Five to AB2766 Memorandum of Understanding, MOU between the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, CVAG, and member jurisdictions to maintain contributions from the cities and the county at 75% to provide sustainable funding of the regional PM10 street sweeping program through June 30 of 2024, and B, authorize the city manager to execute Amendment Five to the AB2766 Memorandum of Understanding, MOU.
Checking that. Kristi, can you take the vote?
Did we have a second?
Yeah, it was Mayor Protem Wile.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
We have a, motion carries 5-0.
With a quorum.
With a quorum.
We're all still here, thankfully. Okay, we will now move on to item number seven on the action calendar. This is the signing and striping plan for the citywide REAS Slurry Seal Project, CP20-362, and this will be handled by Chet Khan, our Associate Engineer. Chet? Chet, your microphone wasn't on. Will you please restart your presentation?
Okay, sorry about that. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the item for your consideration today is a request to approve the signing and striping plan for the addition of half mile of Class II bike lane on Ramon Road between Radler Road and Los Angeles Road on the westbound side. The bike lane striping and signing will be done in conjunction with, sorry, the bike lane, striping and signing will be done in conjunction with the upcoming REAS Slurry Project for the notion, northern portion of the city. Staff has identified a section of roadway on Ramon Road which could easily accommodate a Class II bike lane. As shown on the signing and striping plan, the bike lane includes bike signs, bike legends, and arrows, and shared road markings. The plan is in compliance with Caltrans requirements and conforms with the most recent active transportation guidelines. Staff is seeking council approval for the signing and striping plan to be installed with the REAS Slurry Project commencing in October. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Just one second, council member. Before we go to the council, we'll go ahead and open the public comment. So if any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. You would press the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in person that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to our remote users. Again, raise hand or star nine on your telephone, and it doesn't look like we have anyone wishing to speak on this item, so Mayor, I'll return this to you and the council for comments or questions.
Are there any comments that anybody on the council would like to make?
Dana, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Kristi.
My question is, looking at the location of the striping area, do we have a priority list determining which areas are to be striped in the future? It seems like this area, kind of out in the middle of nowhere, whether there might be better, other criteria for doing some other section?
So the answer is yes. City staff has identified all missing links in our active transportation infrastructure. And actually, this is a pretty utilized area of the city, and a lot of the time, it's by high school students, since it's right next to Rancho Mirage High School. Ramon Road is a very popular use for our bicyclists here in the valley, and so this is one of those missing links that's been on our plan. And as we redo a roadway, we're always looking to improve our active transportation infrastructure. So since this section of the roadway is being redone, it's the perfect opportunity to also stripe the bike lane here.
Thank you.
I might add a comment that, over the last few years, in discussion with CVAG on the CVA link, our city offered and continued to offer for a number of years, the Ramon Road route for Rancho Mirage's participation in the CVA link. They never gave it a study, they never discussed it, they never asked us a question about how it could be affected and used in a significant manner for CVA link. And I just want the record to reflect that, that there's been no interest from CVA link into this roadway that I think is ideal for bicycling. So that's my comment. Any other comments? Anybody wish?
Yes, Dana, I do have a comment, if I may. Ted, were you going to say something?
Go ahead, Charlie. I'll speak after you.
Thank you. You know, every time we talk about the, the bike lanes, I always like for somebody to tell me and the audience and the city, how many miles of bike lanes do we have? So if somebody has the answer to that?
Chet, go ahead.
We have, right now, we have 41 miles.
Very good. You want to repeat that again?
Is that before or after this?
After this, we'll have 41.5 miles of bike lanes.
Very, very, very good. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, along, I was going to make a comment similar to your own regarding this particular route as it relates to the CVA link. As you know, we have had numerous discussions over the years, and Rancho Mirage was unfortunately accused of being an obstructionist as far as the CVA link is concerned, and we were anything but that. We always wanted to cooperate and indeed provide this as an alternative, which made so much sense because obviously it is in keeping with transportation specifically for the high schools. And we're going to go ahead and do this, I think it would be great addition, and the feedback that we always got, as you know, because we took the majority of the hits on this, is that Ramon Road was too far. It was out of the way, that we wanted to take the CVA link down Highway 111, which would have been hazardous and an obstacle to our residents and commercial property. So I think us approving this particular route would be a great addition and one that we have frankly suggested for many years. Thank you, Mayor.
I agree completely. Any other comments? Okay, can we have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move that the city council approve the subject signing and striping plan to be installed with the citywide REAS Slurry Seal Project, CP20-362.
And I'll second that.
Kristi?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you, Kristi. We will now move on to the last item on the action calendar, and that is our coronavirus update. So today, staff doesn't have any specific recommendations for the council, but just to give you a summary of where we are, our face cover order is still in effect. In your last meeting, we implemented additional measures on short-term rental properties, mainly notification of what the local rules are, and then limiting the daytime occupancy to the nighttime occupancy so that you don't have large parties happening at short-term rentals. Only the people, only the cohort or unit at that property should be the ones at that property. From a great plates standpoint, the program was extended through October 9, 2020, which is great news. This program is a fantastic program that is funded by FEMA, is funded by the state, and partially funded by the city of Rancho Mirage. So as the local program administrator of this program, we do incur 6.25% of the cost of the program, and this is something that the council approved back when this program was first launched on May 7. And since then, I think we've all kind of realized the power of this program. The purpose of the Great Plates Program is to feed at-risk seniors, so they get three meals a day delivered free of charge to them, three nutritious meals. At the same time, our restaurants are greatly struggling because of the health and safety protocols that are in place. So this program is a big win for our struggling restaurants as well. So to date, the total funds through this program that have ended up in our restaurants is just under 1.9 million. We have served in Rancho Mirage to our at-risk seniors through this program 86,000 meals, and all of this for the city cost of about $118,000. So for $118,000 to the city, we've been able to get about 1.9 million into 17 restaurants in Rancho Mirage and provide 86,000 meals to our at-risk seniors in Rancho Mirage. Now, this program would not be the success that it is without the great work of our staff, and there are many staff that have a hand in this, but the primary is Jessica Polium, our management analyst. Jessica is the one coordinating with all the restaurants, the delivery of the meals, and she's really done a great job making sure that we have variety. You know, I don't know too many great plates programs out there that are providing Wallys in their meals, so they've just done a great job. And I definitely want to acknowledge our restaurants. So we have 17 participating restaurants in Rancho Mirage, and they have all stepped up big time for this program. They've been doing a great job on the deliveries, on the preparation of the meals. The meals are fantastic. Even if someone has some dietary restrictions, we're accommodating those as well. So the- So, the program's just been going great, and it's fantastic news that it got carried through October 9th. And hopefully, when it comes to October 9th, we get another extension, because this is just a win-win. It's a win for the restaurants, and it's a win for our at-risk seniors who are getting meals delivered to their home free of charge. So, really want to thank the council for their faith in staff in implementing this program and providing the necessary budget for Rancho Mirage to be the local program administrator. I think it's really benefited our at-risk seniors in our community by being able to put the Rancho Mirage touch on it and make sure that it has the customer service and the quality that comes along with Rancho Mirage. So, with that, that is our update. And if there's any comments or questions, we'd be happy to take those. But since this is an action item, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment section. So, if any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. You would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in person that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one here in person. We do have one of our remote participants that would like to speak, and Mr. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, thank you again, Brad Anderson. I live within the city of Rancho Mirage. I want to talk mainly about the city mandates, but I need to address two items earlier that is COVID-related in fashion, because on the September 3rd meeting of the telephone, you misrepresented yourself when you said you contacted me twice. And, you know, because the meeting was on September 3rd, I got contacted from the city on September 16th.
Mr. Anderson, speak to the topic. This is not non-agenda public comment. Speak to the agenda item.
No, I'm sorry, but you did it, afford the public that aspect of a COVID update, and you refused to. So, and that's because of the mandates. As you stated before in your mandate, you are doing it so the businesses can get funding or be eligible for funding. And that's fraud, you know, that's state-wide fraud. So, and I would like to speak on the closed session items, one and two, when that comes available. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other members of the public that wish to speak, I will return this to you, mayor and the council.
Thank you. A question I have, Isaiah, is, to what date is the extension on mask-wearing extended?
So, our current order is through September 30th, 2020.
Isaiah, I have a question.
Well, hang on a second, Richard. So, in other words, in 10 days, it's going to lapse? Is that right?
So, what we've been doing is, since these orders don't always line up with a city council meeting, your next city council meeting is October 1st. So, the, I've been extending the order through the next council meeting date so that the council can weigh in on the item before it expires. So, no, the one won't expire.
Okay, and you'll continue it to October 1st as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have nothing further. Is anybody else?
Yes, I have a question. Isaiah? I know in the beginning that some of the restaurants were able to provide to their residents some additional items other than just food and the way of paper goods, or rices and beans, or packaged items that they were preparing. Is this also stake, still staking place? And are they still providing, other than food items, if people need?
You know, some are, but that is kind of, the need for that has gone away because now our grocery stores have returned to kind of normal capacity with their stock of paper goods or products. So, they really, in the beginning of the pandemic, when we saw a lot of panic buying and shelves were being wiped out, that's when this was more prevalent. But I do know that I, there are some that still offer the products.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further.
Okay, no further comment. Can we have a motion to receive and file the report, please?
Someone?
I'll say.
Taker?
Okay, there's a motion. Kristi?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Well, I think that's the end of this agenda. The city attorney, where he can tell us what?
Yes.
He tells us. Go ahead.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, council. You know, it's been six months. I've been living with my dogs 24/7, that they are starting to take me out for a walk. But just on another personal note, you know, councilmember Smotrich mentioned something that I think is really, really important, and that is, you know, please call your family, your friends, people you know who are lonely. You know, today is the 50th anniversary of my mother's death, and I really wish I could call her. So, if parents are around, please give them a call. Tell them you love them and you miss them. So, with that said, we are now going to recess into closed session to confer with the city attorney regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 regarding the case of Save Rancho Mirage versus City of Rancho Mirage. The council will also confer with the city attorney regarding significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54956.9D2. And that's regarding one potential litigation case regarding a settlement matter that we are working on. And that's it.
Thank you, Steve. We did have one member of the public that wished to speak on these two items. So, if we could unmute Brad Anderson's line. Brad, can you hear us?
Yes, again, thank you, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I wanted to speak on your closed session topic, number one, which is Save Rancho Mirage versus Rancho Mirage. I would hope that you can conclude that factor and not, you know, have any type of reprisal actions against any of the members that were involved in that, because this is going to be an issue. And I'll go ahead and move on to item number two, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. And item number two, you know, a lot of that issues are really not known to most of the general public. But I'm concerned that the city has impacted, or it's quite clear from your prior statements that public participation is not welcomed in this meeting, especially from me, and that's very disappointing. And on topics like this, where you have litigation against the city, it's going to just be a continuing factor because of that. And I hope that you are better stewards of the resources that the city has entrusted to this council in the future and just allow the public to be, participate in these meetings and be an active member of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mayor, we'll go ahead and have an adjournment.
Nothing else to be spoken on or about, seeing none. We will now adjourn to your closed session.